So roll call, Mike Busbell is not here tonight. John Cantafio.
Here.
On, without a voice on Zoom. Rich Kroll.
Here.
Christine Elleris.
Here.
Dean Fabrizio.
Here.
Ron Feligno, who also doesn't have a voice. Here. Dave Gala.
Here.
Kelly Malousy.
Here.
Matt Sather.
Here.
Tony Silver.
Here.
And myself. Okay. I'm going to open it up to public comment. Again, if we could try to keep it in two to three minutes for each person so that everybody has a chance to talk, we have a lot of work to get to tonight. So be really helpful if someone has said something that you just agree with. You are welcome to just come up and state your name and address and just say that you agree with the person before you or earlier. That would be wonderful. And so I'll just start with who's everybody first. Nope. There's got to be somebody.
Good evening, Richard White, 169 Churchill Road. I reviewed the seven options from the prior agenda and listened to the review of your top three in preparation for tonight's meeting. I'd like to thank both the chairman and the architects for taking our town council's motions seriously. While others have used this opportunity to complain, wrongly accused the public of poor math skills and tried to play political leapfrog going back decades, Lori and Tom simply got to work. Thank you. I'm less concerned with the overall cost reduction goals of our town council than I am in meeting the needs of a senior center and minimizing the impact to the neighbors of the Grace Church property. Tom has already shown that cost savings are possible. The two options that include a separate building for the middle school sized gym, I think those are options four and five, and three pickleball courts should be rejected as these represent the worst possible outcome for the neighborhood. Let's pretend they were never brought up in the first place. I like the options that reduce the gymnasium to support two pickleball courts and basically a half sized basketball court. I'm confident that Tom can find the needed height. As has been stated, the town has at least 10 school based basketball courts. While I understand the need for exercise space and that pickleball is part of the draw to a new team, senior center or any senior center, we do not need to be running multi-team half court basketball programs out of a senior center. In fact, relabeling the parks and recs offices as storage or utilizing them else otherwise or removing them completely would greatly help the neighbors' concerns. I am concerned with some of the options that remove or reduce the excavation and retaining walls that have been described as improving the buffer with the neighbors. A 20 foot buffer between high density, high use municipal structures and residential property lines is too close. I don't understand why none of these options attempted to rotate the building in order to increase the buffer. I believe a member of this committee was hinting at that. And allow traffic, half of the traffic on one side of the building and half of the traffic on the other side of the building. Has the geotechnical study been completed and released? The site prep costs, which include excavation and stormwater management, was priced with a placeholder or average value that would be firmed up based on these results? Has the study shown that the original site prep cost estimate would be going up or going down or staying the same? Finally, I'm opposed to any of the value engineering options at this time. Keep these concepts in reserve, given the uncertainty of both inflation and tariffs. Hopefully, they won't be needed. Thank you.
If it's Milton Chin, you know, there's always handouts, right?
Just make sure you give your name and address.
I missed that last time.
I'm Milton Chin, 15 Oxon Hill Road. I am confused on the goals of the senior center cost savings project. I think many on this committee share my confusion. Tonight, I offer two viewpoints that I believe will help you decide if cost savings are even possible. Trumbull has appropriated $125,000 to investigate design changes that reduce the cost of the senior center to $800 per square foot from its current $1,058 per square foot. Not only is this goal impossible to achieve, the options on the table increased the per square foot price to over $1,200. All of this could have been avoided if the problem were thought out before the money was spent. Town council has identified the new community center in New London as the proper pricing benchmark for use for our senior center. In real estate terms, New London would be used as a comparable to value our project. At the last town council meeting, I said New London is not a comparable to Trumbull. New London is more like Bridgeport. Others pointed out that the new Hillcrest School Building estimate is $1,000 per square foot, the same as the senior center. Nevertheless, Trumbull Council affixed $800 as a target price for the new senior center and created this cost savings project to attain this goal. I invite your attention to Figure A. In this figure, I show that $800 per square foot is an impossible goal to achieve by slicing and dicing the existing design. Across the top of Figure A are four area reduction scenarios, 0, 10, 20, and 30%. Column one shows that the existing design needs to be cost reduced by 24% to achieve $800 per square foot. This is not reasonable because it entails a complete redesign. If instead, we leave the building alone and just trim the gym area, the results are just as bad. This is shown in columns two and four. For example, if we cut 10% out of the area, the project cost needs to be reduced by, reduced to $23.5 million to achieve $800 per square foot. It is simply not possible to reduce the cost by one third by cutting out only 10% of the area. The proper time to use $800 per square foot was back in November of last year. QA and M would be directed to modify the Hardy Lane design to fit the Grace Church property and to limit the cost to $800 per square foot. These marching orders would have created a 30,000 square foot senior center costing $24 million. After the initial view of the design, a common thought arises, the building's exterior looks industrial. There are few windows. The basketball court has a poured concrete floor. The committee asked Tom this question. How come this building design looks like it belongs in Bridgeport rather than Trumbull? Tom answers, you get what you pay for. The $800 square foot bogey is simply not appropriate for Trumbull. We last, we heard at the last building committee meeting that another cost saving tool is to negotiate a lower price with QA and M. This is like saying to Tom, you need to sharpen your pencil. This is impossible and cannot work. To negotiate, both parties must have flexibility. If Lori sells widgets and I buy widgets, we can negotiate a fair price. Lori's widgets contain a profit margin, so her widget prices are flexible. I too have flexibility in the prices I pay for widgets. QA and M designs buildings and provides estimates of project costs. Their goal is to create designs their customers want and cost estimates that are accurate enough to entice bids. Their $32 million cost estimate for the new senior center contains profits for those involved in project execution. QA and M does not have the right to bargain away profits belonging to others. If you want to negotiate a lower price like Lori and I did with widgets, you must wait until the bids come in next year. QA and M has no pricing flexibility. To the town council members on this committee and those viewing via Trumbull TV, it has taken Lori and her people years to get the senior center ready for a referendum. Then at the last moment, a councilman reached somewhere on the web that $700 per square foot is the proper price target. This is like a pregnant woman just weeks before birth of her baby girl having her agitated husband say, I read somewhere that boys are cheaper to raise than girls. He collars her OB and demands to change the baby from girl to boy. The impossibility of this is similar to the current cost savings project. The best that this committee can do is create an option that cuts functionality significantly and increases the per square foot price rather than lowering it. This project has hit the frustration of purpose wall and should be terminated. You know from your jobs outside town council that management would never allow a project to continue to seek the mythical $800 per square foot goal when it is impossible to attain. It seems that Trumbull Republicans wanted to manufacture a cost savings victory.
Well, I'm going to ask you to kind of finish up.
I'm finishing up. It seems that Trumbull Republicans wanted to manufacture a cost savings victory, enabling them to march into November's election as the great guns of mockers of Trumbull. But it will not work out that way. All we need is one brave Republican to break with their caucus, then at the town council meeting in June, that one Republican vote can send Lori design, all $32 million of it, to referendum where it belongs. That one person will restore Trumbull to its true values. Thank you.
I'm going to do a quick check on you though. Tom and I never had that discussion, right? I know it was hypothetical.
Jerry Gregory, 45 Plymouth Avenue, Trumbull. I guess I'll start with just a simple clarification. On April 7th, there was a lot of discussion and there has been continuously about cost per square foot. And the city of Colchester was used as an example at that meeting. Their building costs $11 million. It's 15,000 square feet. There's 4,600 people living in Colchester. The cost per resident per square foot is $2,400. We're proposing for $31 million, which I think is more than appropriate value for what we're going to get. A 30,000 foot building, square foot building is proposed. There are 37,000 people living in Trumbull and that equates to $837 per square foot per resident. I think that's more than reasonable. I have a check in my bag. Okay. Let me start off by just saying, I think it's been a shameful process that the finance and the building committee suffered on April 7th. To do all of that work and be called to task when it should have been done in pre-meetings and never has been done for a improvement or addition to any of the schools. And it's another slap in the face for the seniors. I always assumed that town government worked for the town. I have since learned that they work for the parties. And that's again shameful. My, I've heard people talk about tonight, the, that we need to keep the original proposal and I totally agree. That's what the committee studied. That was recommended. That was given the order to the architects to build and they built a wonderful facility that will serve the town now and into the future. And I think everybody on the town council will eventually be happy we did. I never paid attention to the pledge of allegiance today, the way I, or in the past, the way I did this evening. And if you'll recall, it finishes with the phrase, there's the loyalty to the country and all of that. It finishes with the phrase that is said at every meeting that you folks attend and justice for all. I don't think revising the original proposal in any way, shape, or form provides justice for the town and more particularly for the seniors. Thank you.
Hi, Marlene Silverstone, Three Cherry Blossom Lane, Long Hill Village. I'd like, I'm hoping tonight that the architects will address the option, how the options being reviewed, make the building footprint fit better in this tight site and how they're addressing the need to have robust buffers for the neighbors at the same time providing driveways for access to and from the site. And number two, I know this committee has said that their task is to set a building, but I'd like somehow either their tasks be enlarged to also include what standards and restrictions are on the community center part. I know the first selectmen has said it's her position to decide, but I, there needs to be some kind of standards restrictions. Otherwise, it's the personal discretion of whoever's in the selectmen's office. Thank you.
Robert Appicram, we live at 10 Pleasant Street. One of the things that I've noticed that is the building from north to south, as far as any of the design changes, has not decreased at all. And I was wondering if we decrease the design that way from north to south. That's for you. Possibly, and then rotate that into the back of the building. I mean, you're not losing any square footage. It would just, by perception from the street point of view, it would make the building look smaller, which then would create a little more buffer zone for than, for the neighborhood there. As far as what everybody else says, this has been a political hot dog, hot potato since, for 10 years. And hopefully, we can get it resolved. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, Mike Ganino, Canterbury. I just, a note, I found a sign that's placed on my lawn without our permission about vote yes and no. So if whoever put it there wants to come to my home and retrieve the sign, they're more than welcome. I didn't throw it out. I'm sure it cost a lot of money. My concern is, is with the politicization of this, the apparently former first select person placed an article in the Connecticut Post recently. And he went on to indicate that the problems with the first recommendation of the committee 10 years ago was a Democratic snafu that our present first select person was the one who brought it to defeat. And I was curious as to why he would have wrote that now. I guess he's looking for his legacy, but the fact is, is that that recommendation never went to a vote. It was never sent to the citizens. That's the first time we've been cheated out of a vote, a referendum. So the citizens, we should be able to choose the path we wish. Based on the recommendations of this committee, I thought that we would have a vote. And again, it's not appeared. And I think the public is being led to believe that it's a noble cause for price, but it's not. The $17 million building failed to go to referendum because the Republicans who had a, dominating the town council at that time, never acted on the recommendation. There was also a movement where the petition, the town, and I think we got 5,000 or 6,000 signatures to have seven districts for voting. And that was also killed by the Republican dominated town council. This is the third time now. I believe in my heart, based on a discussion I had with a Republican town council member that there will be some accommodation made. And I trust him implicitly, but I'm afraid that because of the politics that are being played, we will again be denied our right as citizens, taxpayers, to vote on what we want for the town. The charge of the committee, I believe, was to make a recommendation, which they did. I think anything that's being done now is just a delaying tactic. And as I look at the plans, I think hundreds of thousands of dollars have been expended to make accommodations for the residents. I don't know that exactly. I'm not sure how much, but I guess somebody can put a number on it. But I think hundreds of thousands of dollars have been expended or authorized to put in buffers and to address concerns of the neighbors. And I would like that to be discussed. I think you're going to find out if you actually search for the truth, there are many, many instances where Grace Church had evening activities, many nights. I don't know that any activity that will be scheduled from the Board of Recreation, I don't think that that would be overwhelming the neighborhood. But again, I understand the concerns of the neighbors. I would just like to say finally, the evening where the gut punch was thrown was really devastating in the senior community. I volunteer three days a week at the senior center and I got to tell you, the impact was pretty horrendous. You get a lot of seniors that are upset that we can't even vote to approve something for ourselves. It may to be defeated. I have no idea. But we should be allowed the right to vote on a referendum. We either want a building or we don't. I think it's just so frustrating to everybody. And consider that 30% of the taxpayers in this town are seniors. And somebody had quoted a figure to me that 50% of the voters in this town are seniors also. I think we need to have at least some respect shown to us. And we need to vote. And I think everything that's being done now, thank God, the committee is going to look again, but I'm not sure that that's in that charge. And it's sad, it's sad to me that the person who wrote that new motion failed to show up at this meeting. Thank you.
Anyone else? No one wants? Okay. I am going to close public comment at 7:25. Thank you for your thoughts. Let's see, before move on to have Tom come and answer some questions, go through some of our options, I just wanted to make a couple of quick points, really for the committee's sake and also for the public. We had a lot of conversation last week, which was necessary. And I know there's still a lot of frustration, but I really want this meeting to be as productive and focused as possible. We do have a timeline that we have to get back to the town council by. And we've already asked Q and A and M to do, QA and M to do miracles now and then, but they're not going to be able to do much if we wait much longer to make some decisions. So I want to talk about some of the things we talked about last week and just put them all in place here and then hopefully no one has to talk about them for the rest of the evening. Things that most or all, either all or most of us can agree on as given. So we don't really need to go into discussion again about it tonight. So I'd ask the committee to refrain. We all know the condition of the Priscilla Place is unacceptable and unsustainable. That's a fact. And I think we're all pretty comfortable with that. We pretty much made our understanding, and Mr. Chen helped us out a little bit, of the reduction in size may not necessarily mean a reduction in cost per square feet. So we may need to be more creative. That's a lot of that is to do with soft costs and infrastructure. They remain no matter what the size. Hard costs might be able to change it a little bit, but soft costs are the same whether you build a 100 square foot building sometimes and a 30,000 square foot building. How it impacts taxes is going to be assessed once the cost estimates come in. I really appreciate Dean's knowledge about this and I know Dave opined on it as well. And I think it's an important conversation. I think it proves a point, but I think that's not something that we can get into detail about tonight. I agree with the last speaker who says, and I believe the committee believes, that we have listened to the neighbors. It's, I understand the frustration. I think it's, it kind of feels like every time there's a little bit of a give, there's something else that's an issue. And I don't know that we're ever going to come to a complete agreement on that, but I feel strongly that this committee has listened to neighbors and made changes at some expenses to try to be good neighbors. And I think we will continue to do that. And again, I want to remind people that these are conceptual plans, so some things you may not see that will happen with your input later. A good deal, the committee firmly stands behind the current plan. It was a unanimous vote. A lot of people feel very strongly about it. I understand that. I'm probably one of those people, but we have a task at hand and we have to follow it and we have to find a way to reduce costs. But I want us to always remember that the programmatic needs should be the ultimate driver. We are so lucky. I see Michelle up on TV land. I'm surprised she has her camera on because I know she feels horrible, has been at the doctor today. And Ronnie is here as well. And they have given us great input about what needs to happen in a senior center. They're not looking for a lot. They're looking for what works. They're looking for what research shows them. And I appreciate their input and that's the ultimate expert to me. And I will say the same for Tom and Rocco, that they have, we all may have input about how to build a building, but they're the experts on how to build a building. And I think respect for that should always be first and foremost. I think there's always questions to be asked, but we are lucky to have the people around this that we do. And so from that, I would like this to be as much of a work meeting as possible. We are, you know, up against trying to get cost estimates for three alternatives into the town council by the beginning of July and we are hitting the end of May now. So I'm going to put Tom up at the mic and we can go through the discussion, the options I shared with him, some of our thoughts from last week, which turned out to be much roughier than I anticipated. And he'll share with us what they've derived from that as well. And then we'll open it up to questions. Where's Rockin' when you need him?
Oh, boy.
It's Rockin' last week.
All right, great. Good evening, Tom Arcari from QA and M Architecture, 153 Scott Swamp Road, Farmington, Connecticut. I don't know where to start, other than obviously there's lots of comments. I know you have a lot of questions about the schemes. I've been filled in, briefed a little bit by Lori about what your conversation last time was. But what I would like to point out is there's, there's a lot of conversation about cost per square foot. And there are a lot of opinions about cost per square foot and I don't think anyone really has enough information to tell you what is, what is the right cost per square foot for this building. I don't think you can really look at comps. And the reality is, is every site is different. Every site has its own challenges. And for you to truly compare project to project, you need to look at the projects in the same timeframe, in the same type of site, in the same geographic region, same construction type. There are so many factors that come to play. So cost per square foot is not a good basis of evaluation. On the other hand, I will say that every project goes through a cost valuation process. I think the process you're going through is a good process. It's painful. I encourage everyone to be patient. You know, the goal, I think, is well meaning. Let's try and execute the project and do so in the most cost effective way for the community. I think that's I think that's sort of a bipartisan interest. So great. Um, I think what the committee should focus on is how do we reduce the cost of the project? How do we reduce the bottom line? Cause the reality is a lot of the options that we're considering take away some of the cheap square footage. And what I mean by that is we're taking away the gym that was built in the basement. Um, that's cheap square footage. We're not taking away the expensive square footage of the building. So even though we're taking away square footage, we're not taking away the things that every building is going to need, whether it's a twenty thousand square foot or a thirty thousand square foot building. We're not removing a boiler plant. We, we need heating and cooling systems. We're not removing any of the bathrooms. We need all the bathrooms. That's the most expensive square footage. We're not taking away the ki- the kitchen or the commercial kitchen, which is where we, it's a financial sink. So the point is, is that um, as we manipulate the project and take square footage away, you could actually see the, the cost per square foot on paper go up. But the bottom line is going down. So I just recommend as a committee, you focus less on cost per square foot and more on how can we reduce the cost of the project without compromising the programmatic needs that we, we want to accomplish as a committee. So um, there was a comment this evening about orientation of the building. Um, north, south, east, west. I, I've addressed this matter numerous times with your committee. Redesigning the building to go left, right, um, east, west instead of north, south. Really didn't work functionally with the site, particularly because of the grade change. Um, it makes access more difficult and it actually starts to restrict some of the available parking on the site. While it would create a buffer behind the building, um, or an access aisle on the south side of the building potentially. It's not necessarily going to increase the buffer um, on the north side of the building. Um, we think the configuration of the building in its north, south configuration is the best and most appropriate for the site and provides accessible access, ease of access at both levels. However, there are still opportunities for footprint reconfiguration. Um, one of the, one of the members of the public tonight presented a concept that shows how we could potentially shrink the building by maybe another structural bay. That's a pretty good idea. That's worth exploring. But I would point out that that reconfiguration doesn't affect the cost of the building right now. And we really need to get three schemes that have, and their cost implications to town council before July. So that's our primary focus. Once a final scheme is sort of identified and if the project is successful moving forward, we can explore, you know, redesign and, you know, massaging, increasing the buffers. Um, there's lots of that to be done if the project goes forward, um, past referendum and fine tuning. Um, that was a pretty good idea, by the way, this evening. There was another comment this evening by Mr. White um, about the geotechnical report. We have completed the geotechnical report. I have one copy with me tonight, but I have presented a digital copy uh, to Lori earlier in the week. Um, in simple terms, the geotech report basically showed what we expected. Um, the excavation is, the projected excavation is about twenty-two feet deep across the, the width of the building, the whole area, the footprint of the proposed building. The first ten feet of soil is um, normal soil, silty sands, gravel, topsoil. Um, about ten feet down and that, that varies between ten and twelve feet. There's rock. And then um, that goes down to about twenty-two feet. So across the profile of the project about, in rough terms, about sixty percent of the excavation is rock. We had anticipated um, at least half the excavation would be rock. So um, the geotechnical report in terms of the, the, the type, the quantitative amount of ex- excavation is um, is right on par with what we anticipated. Um, one of the biggest issues with the excavation is not just the rock, but it's also the amount of excavation. There's a lot of soil that has to be pulled off the site. Um, trucking costs and site removal is very expensive. Um, on, on all of our sites, we try and balance the cuts and fills. What that means is wherever we're cutting, we find the place to, to fill. So that we don't have to, we can move the dirt around on the site instead of taking it offsite. But taking all that soil offsite, whether it's soil or rock, um, is fairly expensive. And that's where we focus the majority of our value engineering uh, efforts is looking at that. The other thing the geotech report points out is that there is groundwater. Um, that was discovered about four feet above the lowest level of the building. So there, there is groundwater that will have to be dealt with. Um, we anticipated waterproofing the entire foundation anyways. Um, because it's subsurface and it's going to be finished space. So we did anticipate dealing with wet or groundwater conditions. So I think the estimates that we have to date reflect the information that we've received in the geotech report. That geotech report will be available um, for the whole committee. Uh, by Lori. So we do have that information. I think it's good, but it does confirm the fact that we have a lot of, um, a lot of soil to deal with subsurface conditions. And that's one reason why you can't compare a New London to Grace Church site. Cause it, they're not dealing with the conditions you're dealing at your site. So, there you go. All right. So my understanding is that you've looked at the seven um, different design options and that you've essentially prioritized options one, six and seven. Should we start with questions? Do you need a summary of those options? What is the?
What we kind of did last week is we went option by option and um, questions came up about, you know, concerns about each one, how they might be um, remediated. So maybe that would probably be the best way if we start with um, and I believe um, the, the priority was one and seven were kind of neck to neck, but uh, six was probably lower on that priority list. But um, maybe if we do it that way and then people can ask um, specifically questions about each option.
Okay. Um, let me start with option one then. So in order to reduce cost for the project and to essentially preserve the program, we looked at two big components. One is the site soil excavation. How can we reduce that in a significant way? And two is how do we reduce the, the gym footprint and square footage associated with that? In option number one, what you're seeing on the right is the lower level floor plan. I'll leave this up in this configuration if everyone can see it. That way we can go back and forth. Um, what, what essentially we're doing is we're taking the, originally the back wall of the first scheme was here and went like this. So all of this grayed out area is now essentially square footage that we're eliminating from the building. Um, and it's excavation that we don't have to do. So it saves a fair amount of soil, um, removal and rock removal. Um, and that's generally reflected in the potential savings, about one point five to two million dollars. What I'd like to point out is that those potential savings of all of these options were prepared by our team and sort of, you know, verbal consult with our cost estimates. Those savings have not been confirmed by a true estimating process. So those savings could go up or down. Um, I'd like to believe ultimately at the end of the day, we'll realize savings in a competitive bidding process. But um, for the time being, this is the best guideline that we can give you. So we're reducing the gym significantly by orienting it this way. The spans for the flooring are reduced. The soil excavation is reduced. And in this scheme, you can see where the, the outdoor, I, I don't want to use the word amphitheater, but the outdoor patio is there. That represents the fact that the floor is still deep. Um, so we've lowered the floor thirty inches in the gym for the extra height. Um, by removing that extra, that thirty inches of extra height, we would realize additional savings in soil removal, rock removal. We'd also eliminate that outdoor um, recessed area, um, which accommodates egress. Um, so there's, there are some, uh, there's some space for potential savings in this scheme. The um, upper level of the plan um, essentially stays very similar to the original layout. We have some flexibility to move this around, pick up some square footage or modify the square footage. But it, it stays um, similar. What someone from the general public mentioned to me this evening was that, well, could we infill this area down here and take some of this program and shift it around and sort of shorten up the length of the building? I, I think that's a pretty good idea. That's another thing that we can consider in these configurations. Um, but option one is uh, is the least changed option. All of the options that we're can, um, considering one, six and seven for this conversation see very little reconfiguring at the main level because that is the pri- primary program level. Um, and I don't think that's where the majority of savings is necessarily to be had.
So I have a quick question. I know that um, and our Michelle and Ronnie are here, but um, the um, on the lower level, that fitness space, you know, there was some concern. And I know it's hard to say exactly room sizes with this, right? They're conceptual plans. We don't have square footage of each room. But the actual shape of that, um, I think was concerning. Is there any flexibility for that?
Yeah, I think so. Um, I think realistically, we could take into consideration expanding and shrinking the footprint, changing the geometry of the footprint on this end of the building and get two rooms that are more um, square than elongated. Um, yeah, I think that's a possibility. Um, keep in mind that any of the schemes that we consider can still be modified, will still be modified to meet program requirements. Um, we just are really focusing on cost reductions at this point.
So, but you were saying, we did talk, I'm doing it again, Dave. I gotta put my fingers away. Um, we may be able to change, shrink the width for, of the building, for lack of a better word. How much does that, you, you're saying um, money-wise, that's not going to make a big difference. It's just creatively how we can do that. Whatever we change upstairs, though, we really need to change downstairs as well, right? So that actually may work out better in this scheme if we move things in and kind of change that fitness and square it off, right?
I think so, yeah. I think scheme one could be modified and, you know, bring it in a little bit.
Okay. And ceiling height, that's a big question. And so we've toyed around with the gym being tall enough for kind of basketball, I keep calling it. Um, in these options, is this the only one that keeps that ceiling height higher?
Right now, yeah. I mean, in either option, we can, we can submerge the floor or raise the floor. Um, it's just cost. So um, I mean, obviously it affects programming, but I would keep in mind that the current, the current space where pickleball is being played, the multifunction room has a peak, at the peak, the ceiling is about seventeen feet tall. Um, this ceiling has about nineteen feet of clearance. So we, we actually have about two feet more than what you currently have. And what you currently have is sort of bowed, so it's lower on the edges. My contention is if the program is going to be used primarily for pickleball and senior dance, fitness, recreation, then it's not necessary that the height be the nineteen feet clear to the structure. Um, so I would think about that.
And do we have a sense of what those kinds of savings mean, you know, for every few feet? What does that look like? Any idea?
I, I don't have an exact cost for it, but I know it's a lot of cubic yards of rock and soil removal, so. Ultimately, I, I could get that when we get into the detailed estimating process. Um, but I think, I think it's better if we, we revert or invert that position, start with the base bid at sixteen feet and then, or sixteen and a half feet and then say, okay, to go to a nineteen foot ceiling, it would be an add to the project of two hundred thousand or whatever, whatever the number is, right? Um, I think that approach presents it in its bare form, the co- the project costs in its bare form. Um, let's see, what do I have here? Can I do this? It's not gonna let me do that, is it? I can't see anymore. Oh my goodness. All right. So option six is actually a pretty strong solution. I do understand that um, Michelle has some concerns about option six because in option six, we don't show a fitness room at the lower level. But I think reconfiguration of the end of the building um, could take on the fitness space and split human services, move human services up, put fitness space behind it. So we can accommodate that. I also know that the back-to-back configuration of the um, pickleball courts isn't ideal and the end, I mean, that's not an ideal way to do it. However, moving the pickleball courts into that configuration really slides them down the page and you can see that this gray area or unexcavated area becomes really big. And that means we've eliminated more than half of um, the required excavation and soil removal in the building, which reflects a significant amount of savings. And that's why you can see the projected cost savings really jumped to about three and a half to four million dollars. Let's see.
See your face, Ronnie. Do you want to add something?
The back-to-back pickleball courts is very.
Yeah, I, I, I understand that. Um, again, that, this concept was put together um, because it really reduces the amount of excavation. That, that's it really. Well, um, actually if I go back to that, one of the other strengths is that this distance from this back wall to the back wall of the building is now much shorter. So the amount of structure that we need to span that space is less. Um, overall, the cost to build those two pickleball courts goes down pretty significantly. Um, and uh, you know, there's just real benefit to, real benefit to that sort of configuration. And on the upper level, what we did was we moved, we grabbed some of the square footage down here that was an outdoor patio and we um, expanded arts and crafts to this location so that these two rooms could remain multifunction classrooms. Um, so that's how we accommodated moving arts and crafts out of the basement to the upstairs. For the most part, I think that works pretty well. It puts the arts and crafts room on the north side of the building, but it provides a lot. But it provides a lot of exterior light for the space. Um, again, we have flexibility to move this wall and adjust this. Um, but I think overall that's a, this is a good solution. We did have to relocate the elevator in this solution. It used to be on this side. Now it's here, but that actually allows for the cafe space to be larger, which I think is overall positive. Um, for the, for the uh facility and doesn't really affect the lower level of the plan. So this is a good, a good option. It saves more than option number one. Um, maybe double um what we save in option number one. And we haven't really compromised the program significantly, other than the pickleball courts are end to end. Um, and I do have to get a fitness space. The fitness space will have costs associated with it. Every time we take stuff out or put stuff back in has, has a cost associated with it. Um, I, I think there's a lot of, I think this is a scheme that really. Um, brought a lot of attention on the cost per square foot because. We removed a lot of square footage. We removed about eight thousand total square feet. That's upstairs, you know, and downstairs, but the cost. You know, the cost per square foot actually went up. It's because we reduced, we eliminated a ton of. What I'll call cheap square footage, basically basement space. Um, if you really want to, if you're really focused on cost per square foot. Um, and you need to have that conversation, the best way to reduce the cost per square foot is to build a bigger building. So um, so for all the pundits that are pushing for a lower cost per square foot. Just say, we need to build a field house and then we'll drive the cost per square foot down. Um, but the to- but the bottom line will go up. And I really think the focus should be on the bottom line, right? Um. This is, this is the site plan for option six. And I, I'd just like to point out that in all the options, the site plan is essentially similar. Um, we've reduced the size of the patio at the back of the building. Um, we've brought some of the parking closer to the building, which I, I actually think is a good solution. Long term, potentially you could even have a, a drop off lane down here. Um, we uh, you know, this, the amount of parking that is hardscape or softscape will be figured out. Um, and will find itself back at the original, original parking assessments that we made. Um, but as the, you know, gym essentially goes away. The conversation about how much hard parking do we need versus how much soft parking do we need? Might change because, you know, the number of um participants in the gym occupants is gonna go down.
Tom, and then when you talk about reduce retaining, what, what's the impact of that?
I'm sorry, reduce retaining.
Uh, on the side, you talk about reduce, are you talking about reducing retaining wall?
I just re- I'm reducing um the amount of the retaining wall. In this configuration, we're exploring the option of just doing a retaining wall sort of at the back of the building. Which provided access um off the back of the um multifunction room here. So in this configuration, the idea was that potentially this just could be a retaining wall here at the back of the building. Um, to, you know, to recapture some of the soil. And then you could have direct access from the back of the multifunction space. Um, that's an option. Um. But primarily, I think what we're talking about is the remu- reduced amount of soil that uh we're holding back. Oh, yeah.
Uh, Ron Feligno, Tom, I notice in all of these relative to the original one, I don't see the food pantry.
The food pantry is in the lower level and it's part of.
Actually, it should be, yeah.
So the food pantry is in the lower level. Human services is actually split into two places in all of these schemes. Human services has offices um in the administrative area, so. If you look in the administrative area, there is um senior center administration. And then there's human services administration, and then they have a shared conference room. And then at the lower level of, of the plan, you'll see this um, this orange box. That's basically the food pantry, and then they have a couple other offices which aren't shown in this.
Did we lose out double door access?
Uh, we're still gonna have access out to the patio in this configuration.
I meant double doors to get the supplies into the food pantry.
Oh, yeah, yes, yes. I mean, some of those details didn't materialize. Because we prepared these concept schemes pretty quickly, just to explore different options to make it happen.
May I pre? Safe to assume that.
Your mic's off, your mic.
If perhaps. Number one is the chosen, not number one, but the original. Is the original go to proposal to the town council. Will the cost remain identical then as they are today?
Yes, essentially, yeah.
Essentially.
Essentially, well, ye- yes, they will remain the same. I mean, we're losing some time, but. The I, the bidding market is also softening, so maybe that benefits us.
Hey, Tom?
Yep.
The, the grayed out area, could you explain what that is? Is that like footings or is that up or concrete or?
That's actually gonna be um unexcavated. That's gonna be soil. So I just graded out to show where the footprint used to be. And then now we're basically eliminating the basement area. By, we're pulling the basement area in, so now the, the tall foundation wall will be here.
Mm-hmm.
Instead of back here where it used to be. So by moving all that program down to the east. This is the east and eliminating all of this program. We're eliminating all the square footage, all the finishes. You know, we're eliminating these big bathrooms, we're going to smaller bathrooms, we're eliminating an entire stair. Now, because the gym is no longer so big, I don't need an egress stair from that gym. So that's all program space that we've saved. Um, and that's all soil excavation we don't have to do.
I understand that part is, is, isn't there something above that?
Oh, yeah. So above it is the upper level of the plan, um which you can see over here. Um, so basically the, the, the pickleball courts, the line of the pickleball courts in this config- in this option is right here. So all of this is now gonna be slab on grade. Um, instead of having a, a base, basically a big basement underneath.
So it's a slab under that?
It's a slab.
Okay, yeah, thank, thank you.
Right on the existing soil.
Thanks. The, the ceiling height on the, on the pickleball area for this?
For, for this um option, we eliminated that recessed area. So right now it's at sixteen and a half feet to the underside of the structure. It might be seventeen because the span is so, so much shorter, the depth of the steel framing. Become shallower, so I, I'll probably have a little more height.
Tom, in all these options, does the location where you have the building in the original, the current plan? Does it change the location of the building at all at, on the site?
Not in option one, two or three, all three of these options. Um, the front of the building stays essentially where it was. Um, and then the back of the building um will change. And you'll see that in, in option seven. But um, again, we have some flexibility to shrink the building a little bit on this end. And if we shrink the building, let's say we can shrink it by twelve feet. That gives us more room to shift the building, so we could, you know, move it up the page six feet. You know, save six feet on each side. Um, and then. So option seven is kind of Rocco's brainchild, and I think it's a good idea. So essentially, the idea is that we would not excavate the building at all. We would build the building, the first floor of the building mostly. Um, where it is, and then we would build the pickleball courts and human services. To the back of the building. The benefit is we can build those on grade. Um, because grade is behind the building, we don't have to excavate for those, for that programming. And we eliminate the majority of all of the excavation on the site. So we can bring the building much closer to a balanced cut and fill. Right now, we're removing about forty-five thousand cubic yards. Maybe we could cut that down to ten thousand cubic yards. Um, that would have a significant impact on the cost. Soil remediation uh accounted for about. Oh, four, four million dollars of the site work. So if we can cut that out, that would be fantastic. Now, the cost of this square footage is more expensive than building basement square footage. Um, and it expands the footprint of the building. So the building will actually get bigger on the site. But um, it's probably the most cost effective way to um build that square footage.
Um, so uh by about approximately, how much more above ground square footage would there be in this version?
Probably. Probably close to five thousand square feet, so the footprint would grow by about five thousand square feet, I'm guessing. Um, so if you see, so basically in this option, the upper floor plan stays very similar. The only thing we left in, in the excavation, excavated area was the stair. Um, from the lower level to the upper level. And we did that because um there was no need to add extra square footage. Um. In this configuration, we're basically having um patio or these exterior roof patios. If we can make the height work, those roofs could be used as exterior roof patios, outdoor areas. Or they could just be nothing, they can just be roofs. Um, but when you look at the site plan, essentially what that means is that we're adding on to the back of the building. Um, there's some benefits to that. We can use the building to help retain the grade on this, this side. Um, so there's some savings in that perspective. We can set these floor, this floor level at whatever floor level we want. So that also helps us avoid excavating all of this area back here to accommodate the parking. Now the parking can be made on grade. Um, so it's a good configuration. Um, one of the things we're probably gonna be prevented from doing though. Is that, you know, in the various iterations, we've explored shortening this entrance drive. But now because we're adding on to the back of the building. This entrance drive is gonna have to go back to its original configuration, which. Which goes back a number of iterations, but really gets it to the back. So that we can get around that addition, that additional space.
Is there an opportunity in this option to reduce the width, kind of square it off?
I think there is by a little bit. Um, so we could probably take the same. We could probably take the same, you know, mantra and sort of cut the program here. You know, put the games room here, put the arts and crafts room here. Slide this space down, make it skinnier and, and longer. So yes, I would say that reduction would probably apply to all three versions.
So in, in this option, the patio is on top of the exercise. Room, am I looking at that correctly?
Yeah, so this patio is on top of pickleball.
Right, so and the roof to the right of that, is that usable space as well?
Potentially, yes. This roof might be more usable than this roof. So the real trick with this roof is what grade do we set it at? And how, how, how much height do we want in the pickleball gym space? If we want a lot of height in that space, then that roof would be, would fall at the. Um, at the wi- at the window level up here at, at the, so when you're in the multifunction room. The ideally, you would walk out of the multifunction room and there would be a rooftop terrace and you could have chairs and seating or whatever. But if that roof is up higher, you wouldn't be able to access that. You would just kind of be looking over the roof. Um, aesthetically, it's not as, I don't think it's as um positive. But I think um functionally and cost wise, it's, it's positive.
Tom, that could al- also be accomplished by digging down to create the height, you know, kind of gets back to where we were.
And maybe we can, maybe we can accommodate egress, but when we dig down. Then we're excavating again, so. Um, it, it, there is a bit of a balancing act there, and that has to be figured out where the, that footprint sits exactly. Um, but uh. You know, potentially we can, a- and there's also the possibility that we can take. You know, this roof and put program over the top of it, really put program here. And then, and then maybe shrink the building down left to right more. So maybe option seven has the potential to have the width of it reduced. You know, a little bit more than the other option.
Tom, excuse me. Since you're speaking of contract, com- bringing in the width of the building. Is there any advantage to narrowing the width of the building and bring it back further into the lot? Moving, you know, encroaching into some of the uh. The non, the non-future oriented parking area.
Oh, the parking area?
Yeah, just, just take some of that up with the building being pushed back a bit.
Bring everything lower?
Would that, would that affect excavation to any degree? Of course, the, the lot isn't leveled, it just, it still tapers down, doesn't it?
Possibly, actually, it's possible. So let's say hi- hypothetically, um hypothetically, we could reduce the building by. Um, this jog amount right here, which I, I don't know if we can do that or not. Um, but if we could reduce it by that jog amount. Then I have enough room between the property line and the building that we could excavate. Use the building as a retaining, and then we could take the building and push it, push it backwards, push it to the east. If we can push it to the east enough, we could actually get more parking at the front of the building, which would be nice. Um. That's a possibility. It's not a bad idea. It's certainly something we could explore.
Thank you.
Rich Cole. Um, first question, so when we're looking at this, um, at the building. Where would the high point of the property be in relation to the building we're looking at?
Oh, so the highest point of the property is right about where the cursor is, right?
Go towards the front?
Yeah, towards the front, and then it slopes, it's kind of in here, it's ki- it's kind of flat right in here. And then it dives off from about, from about here, it starts diving off pretty significantly.
So with um, with all three scenarios where there's less es- excavation. In any of those three, are we no longer hitting groundwater?
That's a really good question. Um, yes, in option seven, I think we would avoid the groundwater. Or gives us the best chance to avoid the groundwater, cause we can set the lower level. These two, we can set this lower level at whatever elevation we want to set it at. We don't have to, we don't have to put it down low, cause it's not under the building anymore.
Mm-hmm. And if we do have a design that has to deal with groundwater, how does that get dealt with? Is it mechanical? Is it drainage, gravity, gravity drainage or?
It can be a myriad of all three, the, a compilation of all three of those things. It depends on the hydrostatic pressure, what really is the groundwater. Um, but it probably means that a minimum waterproofing the back wall, the foundation, putting in drainage plane. And a drainage path. Putting in drainage plane and drainage path, so that groundwater can, has a place to go, doesn't get trapped. Um, and you can deal with it mechanically, but we really would like to avoid dealing with it mechanically at all costs.
That would be good.
Is there really a, a water line of where the water encroaches into the building footprint? On the street, is it coming to the very beginning of the building, the middle of the building, back of the building, where's that water line end or doesn't it end?
Um, we don't really know, the water level, we know what the water level is, it's down. Um, basically four feet above the base, the current lower level floor. Um, but we'd have to do significantly more. Um, borings to find out exactly what the extent of where that, where that um, sort of sliver of water is.
Um, we've talked about a lot of creative, I think, really, really creative ways to. Deal with the, as you said, the cheap square footage, right? Is there anything obvious, cuz we're looking at the expensive square footage and all these options is pretty static, are there any obvious things we're missing? Without compromising programming in the layout of the expensive square footage?
I don't think so, I think all three of these options maintain all of the, you know, real, the senior center real estate that was in the program. Um, we haven't really compromised it, the only thing that's really been compromised is the gym space. And you can argue it hasn't really been compromised from the original programming exercise. Because the gym wasn't a part of the very original uh programming exercise for the senior center. So anything at this level, um, that, let's say we decide. We want to cull or reduce, you know, that's a committed decision from a program.
What about just like? A layout or, or the number of walls, the, 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 like any creative, interesting. Like open concept might save a few bucks or what, you know, is there anything like that that you?
Actually, the, the floor plan is very efficient, there's, there isn't a lot to this floor plan, every space has storage. But they're mostly open spaces with operable partitions. Um, we've built the building in a very cost-effective way, the upper level, it's. Um, you know, we're proposing metal studs, re-engineered um, like gauge framing. So it'll be framed like a house, but it's all out of metal studs, the roof will be all metal studs. You could do it out of wood, um, I kinda don't recommend that, I think. Um, I think this building should be non-combustible. So, but you could save a little bit of money if you did it out of wood construction, um. I, I really think the, the plan is, is cost-effective, I really do. From a construction standpoint.
I mean, the interesting part is, for all this time, the components really haven't changed, right, we know what the senior center needs. You know, I know people tongue-in-cheek call it a pickleball center, it is not, it's very clear, especially by this um, level. That um, those are the spaces we've been moving around in every different way possible to um. Meet the needs of the senior center and um, that the gym is now a need, that they just don't happen to have now, so I think. Even when you look at how much we're losing um, square footage wise, it's, it's. Really not that big of a building anymore compared to Priscilla Place, which we've already talked about, so. Um, when we do last questions on the options, then if you could, Tom, maybe we could talk a little bit about the value engineering. List a little bit and um, kinda get a better feel on that. Anybody have any other?
So Lori. Now that we have three um, three plans in compliance with the resolution, um, whose choice is it gonna be? Which version goes to referendum?
I can't really answer that for you, sorry.
Thank you.
So um, Tom, if we're gonna have a uh, an option here with less excavation, is that gonna reduce the uh? Amount of time it takes to build, build the building and do the project?
Absolutely.
That would be a lot easier on the, the butters and neighbors as well, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's still gonna be a year-long process, but it might not, it might go from a. Sixteen-month project to a twelve-month project or thirteen-month project, so you save three months, but that's actually. That's a good point, something I hadn't considered in my thought process, but time obviously has value. And um, that's three months of general conditions for the contractor, you don't have to expend. Um, it's a lot of unforeseen items in the ground that you don't have to entertain, so. One of the things you're doing is mitigating a lot of risk. Um, by going with, let's say, option seven or option six.
Um, Michelle, and I see, I know Dawn doesn't have a voice, but Michelle or Vicky. Kathy's on there too, do you have anything, I know Dawn doesn't have a voice.
Yeah, uh Lori, it's Dawn Cantapio. Um, I do have a question, on every place that we visited, they said that storage space, storage space. Storage space is a real concern. On a lot of these, the lower levels, I don't see the storage space that was in the original plan. If we have, you know, certain activities going on downstairs, where is all the equipment gonna be stored? Is that something we can add back in? It looks like a lot of it was taken away.
Yeah, I, I took everything out, um, my mandate was pretty clear. But yes, I mean, again, these are, these are strategic options, for lack of a better term, so the details. Can be refined as we're developing um, each option. And, and honestly, I'm reticent to develop any of these three options to a very high level. Um, until it goes to town council and town council. Um, oh, you know, weighs in, opines on the project approach. Um, I think it would be a little premature to really, to really do that.
Okay, well, they, you, you did a great job, Tom, everything looks good, thank you.
Michelle, did you have anything?
Hi, good evening, um, just to chime in, in um, seven, I think, you know, the, the programming needs um, can be met, there's not. There was one room that was taken out downstairs, it was originally the art room, it was a classroom space. Um, it looks like rooms upstairs were enlarged. Uh, that, you know, might help, but I thought that, that one room just was really. Important space because there's this need for community space and that's been spoken about from the very beginning. And um, I just, I just think with those being eliminated, I just wanted to point out that the community space will again be a difficult situation. I think that will be missing from this, from this building, um, during senior center hours, otherwise, um, I think Dawn asked. About storage, I don't think I have any other questions.
I know in some of them, the conference rooms and uh. A kind of a meeting space room, but we may have some flexibility for that moving on, it seems, right? Alright, anybody, anybody else for the options before we move on to the other list? Good?
Uh, Lori?
Yes, Vicky.
Hi, thank you very much. I, I'm just gonna echo Michelle's sentiments uh, and some of the other things I've heard here for the last number of meetings here, that um. Hopefully, these options are protecting the programmatic needs of the seniors. Uh, as far as certainly the upper space um, in the building seems to be doing that, I do continue to have concerns. About the um, the pickleball space, or I shouldn't say pickleball space, but that room being used to play pickleball, how's that sound? Um, and I wanna make sure that um, you know, we are providing that space and. The space for uh, seniors to be able to do um, athletic. Uh, have athletic opportunities, I think it's been made very clear. Um, that that was part of the programmatic needs of the seniors right from the beginning. And I'm not sure that um, that we're not taking too much of that space away, but I will leave it to your committee to keep talking about that. And um, it, it will be up to the council to opine. About this, um, when it comes back to them, but they will be making, ultimately making that decision. It's not my decision to make, um, my decision from the beginning, or my opinion about this from the beginning was to bring. Um, this uh, space to the voters to give them the opportunity to vote on it. It's not uh, my decision, it's not the council's decision, it's not the board of finances' decision, I say it over and over again, it is the people's decision. And hopefully, um, we can find a, a compromise here that brings this to the people and allows them to vote on this finally. But I am concerned about um, about that athletic space that. You know, are we taking too much away from that area to make it a true area that seniors are allowed to um. To be able to, to exercise, it's because it's very important for them as it is for everybody. So that's all I'll say at this point.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, uh, just to echo Michelle and, and Vicky, I, I also think on option six and seven, the uh. To the extent that we wanted a community aspect to this, it's gone, so um, no?
See it a little di- differently, I, I, I think we need a, a meeting space back in there, a conference room that can be used during the day, but I think I've always envisioned the um. The use of the senior center rooms for community use after hours, I mean, the only one that would really be limited is the art room, cuz you'd want things in place, but. I think our conversation all along has been that some of the other spaces can be used by the community after senior center hours. Well, it could be, I mean, that, that multi-function room, uh, only a third of it is really gonna be set up, you know, continually. So that's a pretty big space, um, that, that's my vision, I, I do think it limits some daytime. Things and I think maybe we can rework a conference or a meeting room in there somewhere. Um, especially if we kinda square off the building a little bit more, so. Um, I'll leave that to the experts to figure that out, but I just, I, I mean, I think the conversation and, correct me if I'm wrong, Michelle, but that it was always gonna be that. You know, that it was a useful space for the, the rooms that exist, you know, the gym, the, the other rooms that we could hold meetings. Alright, so should we move on to this? Value engineering options, and you know what, I think when we were talking about it last week, it's just trying to get a. Or five days ago, days ago, whatever it was, trying to get an idea, I mean, I think you kinda threw everything in here as possibilities. I, just for my opinion, I tend to agree with Mr. White, I'd like to keep things in and take them out as necessary, I know we talked last week about the. Cupola being, um, you know, kind of uh, uh, maybe the one that everybody seemed kind of flexible, but it is one of the nicest. Aesthetically for the outside of the building, so that would be unfortunate, but maybe if, Tom, you can just kind of. I mean, some of them are obvious, but if we can just kinda go through this list and you can kinda give us pros and cons, or if there's a big impact, it's particularly to. Each, each, each option.
Okay, um, we know what eliminating the cupola means, um. Darn it, I always lose cupolas cuz they're easy to chop off.
To keep. It's still the other keeper, we just gotta get rid of whatever the big fourteen thousand thing they put in the middle of it.
Um, the porcha share is the uh, drive undercover. Um, for the uh, main entrance. Um, we like this, we think it's a, a good programmatic element, it's something that could always be added at another time. Um, it is an appendage to the structure. Um, manual partitions versus automatic partitions, so. The, there's a lot of cost in the um, multi-function room, automatic partitions. Um, it's a high-priced item, it's six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, for three hundred-ish, three twenty-five, we can do a manual operated partitions. And basically, they're big panels that, you know, move and they have tracks in the ceiling, you've probably seen them before in convention centers. We, we end up doing them in most of our senior community centers, just because. Most communities don't wanna pay the extra for the automatic um, partitions. Um, they function the same way, they do the same functional task, it just takes time and staff. To, to move them and reconfigure them. Um, whereas the automatic ones, there's essentially a key. And the director, you know, facility director can turn the key and they come out of the ceiling and they close in a matter of a minute or two. So, um, the automatic partition is an amenity for the senior center from, you know, uh. Functionals, not, not a functional standpoint from a facilitation standpoint. Um, or gym flooring versus wood flooring, this is just a finish element, it's whether or not the floor has. Wood floor or has a um, uh, sort of a, a resinous floor. Um, if the floor is going to be used for pickleball and exercise. Uh, a resinous floor is maybe even more suitable, something to consider. Um, wood floor is really appropriate for um, dance and for basketball. Um, reduce storefront curtain wall, so the, the rear of the building. Um, has a very tall glass entryway. We could reduce that glass and use a traditional exterior wall system and turn it more into windows. And probably save a chunk of money. Um, from the rear facade of the building, we could use siding instead of stone. Um, and there are savings there of some sort. We thought you could remove the kitchen equipment and do that in the future, that's really a furniture element, there was no hard cost for that in the budget. Um, eliminate stage platform and ramp, you could save some money, but uh. It's a pretty low cost and it has a high functionality. Um, there are some very decorative wood slat acoustic ceilings, um, in the concept, we could go back to just a. Um, a nice tile ceiling, um, that would save money, that's something I would certainly look into that. Doesn't affect program whatsoever. Um, using asphalt paving versus pervious paving, I know that um. Those of us um, non-environmentalists in the community have recommended that. Um, I think there's savings to go to asphalt paving versus pervious paving. Um, we've been trying to use the pervious paving, um. But uh, we can swap that out.
Hey, Tom, um, so why, why if, if, if there's no uh, detrimental impact of the uh. Uh, wood slat acoustic ceilings, why put them in there to begin with?
Cuz they look awesome.
But is, isn't there any sound um, um, muffling kind of a, a function?
Both types of ceilings can, uh, both types of ceilings can uh, deal with the acoustic. Um, conditions in the space, so, um, I mean, listen, we're guilty sometimes, we're architects. We wanna make the building nice, um. We've been asked to look through the estimate and find things that could potentially be cost savings and. This is low-hanging fruit, so I, I'm pointing it out. Reduce the buffer design, you know, the buffer design is really sort of a moving target. Um, we think the buffers need to be apropos, um, but, you know, our rendering showed stone. Stone walls and, you know, stone piers, it could be planting and a, a nice fence. So, um, that's something that, um, we have a lot of flexibility in and. Um, I, but I think there's savings there to reduce it to something different from what we were showing, but still have a buffer. Um, and then in the soft costs side of the project. We really identified three big items that are in the overall project, one is um, new furniture for the building. We tend to recommend that if you're building a new building, you put new furniture in it. Um, at least carry some budget for that. However, um, one of the big items in the project was uh, carrying an owner's representative. So this is something that um, towns. Do differently, um, an owner's representative is essentially. Um, a professional that is hired to act as the owner's project manager for the project. Dedicated project manager from start to finish of the project, it's not a full-time employee, but. You know, someone who's certainly spending sixteen to twenty hours a week throughout the whole course of the project. Is on site, is reviewing the construction. is basically acting as owner. If you don't hire that person, someone from the town has to take on that role. And who might that be? I I don't know who that would be, but someone's got to be the act as owner at the table in all of the negotiations, all the construction meetings, you know, basically the oversee the bidding process. Some towns have that person in in-house. I know that you have people in-house that are qualified to do it, but I don't know if they have the capacity to do it. So in fairness, I've been asked to carry this in the budget.
So that's a hard no.
Okay. And then the last thing, it's hard to quantify, but is to deliver the project as a general contractor project versus a construction manager. This is a size project that could very well be done as a general contractor. And I don't know if everyone truly understands the difference. But a general contractor is is much simpler in understanding. You design the project, you put it out to bid, and contractors all bid on it. And let's say their number is thirty million dollars, and that's it. It's all in thirty million. They manage everything. They own the project. Everything is set. In the construction management process, you go out to RFQ for a construction manager. A construction manager is a company that is going to oversee all of the separate subtrades, carpenters, plumbers. It it's still the same people. It's just a different structure. A traditional construction manager or general contractor had all of those services in-house. Meaning if you went out and hired a general contractor, you know, back in the day, a general contractor would do the framing and the electrical and the plumbing. And they had all those people working on staff. Or a lot of them. Now that's very rare. Most contractors today are construction managers or white collar contractors, for lack of a better term. They don't actually, they do almost no digging or hammering their managers. And they manage all the subtrades. So the construction manager will come on board. They will act somewhat as an owner's representative. They will help us develop the budget of the project. So once this goes to referendum, there's still a lot of work to be done. Schematic, design development, construction documentation and bidding. The construction manager will actually come on board early and help help us, help the design team and the owner work through all the detailing, do preliminary budgeting, help us cut the scope back to get to the budget. When you have a fixed budget, like a referendum number, sometimes that's beneficial because you're going to work the design to that number. When you go the GC route, you don't really have that input. So you you design it, you get an estimated look at it, you hope it's on target, you put it out to bid and and you just hope that it's coming in. But when you have a construction manager, you're getting more advice upfront about how to get to the budget process. Construction managers tend to be a full-time team that represents the owner. It's kind of in between the owner and the tradespeople. They are very valuable in projects that are complex, projects that are very big, projects that have a lot of different trades, projects that require special phasing, right? They'll over, like in a typical school project where half of the building is being occupied by students and you're working on different phases of the project every summer. The construction manager works specifically with the subtrades, how to isolate the work and phase the work and schedule the work. This is a project where you're going to have free rein of the site. The site will be fenced off. There's no occupants on the site. There's no complex phasing. There's really no complexities about this construction project really whatsoever. So I think you could do it as a general contractor process. In the general contractor process, you tend to have more competitive bids upfront, meaning the number will be more, your first number will be more competitive because the contractors are hungry to get the work. They'll drive their costs down. The problem with that approach is then they're trying to catch up throughout the process. So they tend to pursue a lot of change orders. It can be litigious sometimes. I'm not downplaying that approach. I like that approach. It works. But as an owner, you have to really be sort of, you know, on top of of the process. Whereas when you hire a construction manager, construction manager is kind of your your ally in the process and works with you to help oversee the subtrades. The construction manager process tends to be more expensive. Various owners reps here in the state put the value of construction management process somewheres between ten and seventeen percent more than the general contracting process. The construction managers say that's not really true because the general contractors get it back in change orders. So they they both think, you know, their their cheese smells better. But the reality is it tends to be more expensive because you're getting more service.
Tom, I'm sorry to interrupt. What is the half a million spent on?
Just staffing, basically. Yeah. So when you get a general contractor, general contractor is going to come in, they're going to be competitive. They're going to have, you know, the owner of the company, they're going to have a project manager and a supervisor. When you get a construction manager, you're paying for a project executive, you know, project manager, a project engineer, a supervisor, and probably a fifth person who is like a staff person that's on site all the time, a less experienced person that can run around and and facilitate things that need to be done. So you're getting a lot, you're getting a lot more, you know, sort of office and estimating services. You're also getting pre-construction services. So all of the upfront estimating and time working with the committee to get the project to bid into budget has a value. So you get more out of it. And this is a guess. It could be less or more. But it's a good ballpark.
So similar projects that you've done, not that anything is quite like this, but where where do you usually, where does it usually tend towards? General contractor or metric manager, construction manager?
It's more, it's really more construction managers today because there are fewer and fewer general contractors. If you put it out to general contractor bid, the construction managers will respond. And you'll see that the construction managers that respond, their bids are higher by five to twelve percent, just because they carry more more staff and more services.
Tom, if I could maybe read between the lines here, were we just talking about managing risk with these last few pieces for the town?
Actually, that's a great point. Construction managers are risk averse. So yes, they they help the town manage risk in a significant way. Arguably, you pay more to avoid more risk in the general contracting process. That's that's at least a sales pitch that CMs will give you. If they were here, they'd be strangling me right now. Actually, there might be a CM. Is there a CM in the group? No, thank you.
And I was more referring, I think, to all, maybe all three of those pieces in the soft costs.
All three of those are managing risk. Not really. Furniture, furnishings and equipment. It's just buying equipment. But the other two are about representation, facilitation of the project and managing risk altogether. But you you could argue there's a million dollars in savings there going the other, the other approach. So I don't know.
It's going to weigh in.
Just doesn't construction manager usually hold contracts?
The construction manager can do it two ways. They can be at risk and they can they can hold the contracts or they can be as an advisor and you hold the contracts. Usually it reverses the CM at risk just because it's a simpler process. There's less risk for the owner.
Is that your $500,000 number if this CM at risk?
The CM at risk, yeah. CM advisors are are less expensive. They're really just an advisor. It's kind of like hiring an owner's rep, so. I don't think you have, I don't think you have the capacity for a CM as advisor.
Mr. Estrada was here. I think he would agree completely. Any other questions about this particularly? No. So my question to you is, what do you need from us to that these can get to cost estimate? A true cost estimate, which is what we've been asked to bring in July?
Well, the first top, the top half of these, if the committee decides, hey, this should be an alternate or this should be out or this is in, generally that stuff can be removed from the estimate. I don't need that immediately. You know, maybe by your next meeting, you can come up with decisions on this. The stuff at the bottom, that's really stuff I I think town council has to opine on. They're not gonna they're not gonna, I mean, town council has to see that. They've asked for the options. Unless you feel strongly you don't want to bring it to town council. But what I've tried to do is put together as many cost-saving options as possible so that you could take them back to the council and say, hey, listen, we've really, you know, we've we've turned over all the stones, you know, what do you want to do?
And I hate to turn the clock back, so I apologize for this, but we're going to, if we can go back to that option seven, six thing that we were talking about, I was thinking about this as you were talking before. And we talked about reducing the amount of excavation that's done on site. But I can recall from previous iterations of this and actually the proposed that we put to town council on April seventh, the excavation not only of the building but also of the parking area. And that excavation of the parking area, which I think is absent from some of the iterations here, actually brought the car level, the parking level below grade, below the the neighbors. And I know that that was a big concern of the neighbors that not to hear vehicles, see lighting, see cars, things of that nature. It sounds to me, and I was thinking about this as you were talking, it sounds to me like some of these may either eliminate or reduce the the excavation of the parking area and therefore increase the amount of visibility of vehicle traffic. Am I incorrect in that?
No, you're you're correct, but not fully correct in the sense that we're trying to bring that grade up, but probably not bring it fully. It probably won't come fully to grade, so there would still be a recess, but it might be three feet instead of eight or nine feet. So still three feet is enough that if you have low shrubs, the headlights of cars aren't shining into the backyards of the neighbors. But yes, as that grade comes back up, the buffer has to be reevaluated in those locations. But fence is a lot less expensive than rock removal and trucking.
Thanks.
So Tom, as far as, I mean, we can kind of go through this list and I appreciate us having some time. I think there's some that we know I could tell by people's facial expressions. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but the overhang is a is a safety issue that I don't think we want to get rid of. The stage and ramp is 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 programmatic. It's been in there from the beginning and should stay. And then we, you know, we've been focusing on buffers all along. We still want to be able to, and I understand there's some wheel room in that. But the other ones we can kind of go through, although kitchen equipment and FFNE to me, there's not kitchen equipment to move over and we're going to need kitchen equipment. So some of those seem obvious. Another thing that seems obvious is is we're not going to be able to have a clerk of the works from everything I've had any conversation with. So that one's a given. The rest we can kind of look at. As far as the options, we've talked about a lot of different like manipulating and things. Do you need more details of that before cost estimate? Or do you feel like you have a good sense of where we're heading towards and that we trust you?
No, we would, we would get started with the estimating process based on the schemes. Actually, what I might do is try and modify the scheme as quickly as possible to reflect a couple of the comments that we've heard and then get it to the estimator. You know, 1A, 6A, 7A, so to speak. And get those to the cost estimator as soon as possible to get that process moving. I also have to, yeah, I also have to make sure that my contract amendment is in place. I think it is, right?
It is.
It is.
It is.
And because I have to engage these consultants, I also want to think about the consultants we engage to do the estimating. So some of the comments we heard were that there are other contractors that will do this project less expensively. Well, okay, let's take that to heart and maybe we'll get one of those contractors to be involved in the estimating process and see if they'll really, you know, put their money on the table. And I have a, I have a professional cost estimator who we might have take a look. So that will be a new independent look. And then we will have PAC Group redo the estimating as well. So hopefully we'll have three looks at each of these concepts.
And could we do kind of these V options? I mean, we went through a couple now that we know we're going to stay. But can we do the estimate and kind of put those as an aside as it'll cost this much more if we go in that direction or this much less? Or you really want to work those into the estimates to the most, the best of our ability? I mean, some of these, it seems like there'll be decisions based on how much money we have.
Oh, the
The list, yes.
I think those are magnitude of cost things. So if council, if we have three estimates and, you know, I take the things out, you tell me to take out, so we're not doing this. We'll prepare those estimates with that stuff and then town council can opine on the stuff that you don't recommend. And if if, for instance, town council says, hey, we want you to do this as a general contractor, then
We'll know what it costs.
Have the contractor, you know, revise his numbers. The estimators revise their numbers.
Okay. To speak to the committee, I know last week we talked about, I did send out an email to town council. I think it went out to the whole town council. Right? How did you get it? And I see a lot of town council members here, so thank you for coming. I see quite a few and nice to add to our our regular audience. So I appreciate that. Asking, you know, just letting them know where we were at, asking if they had a budget number. I think that will be hard to make a decision amongst 21 people in that way, but the question is out there. So if I get any feedback on that, I will let you know. But I certainly appreciate you guys kind of going through the grit with us here. So I think it sounds like you can start pecking away at this. If we can all reflect, if anybody, you know, there's always the the next morning you think, ah, I forgot to think of this. Please send it along. I'll obviously send it along to Tom Rocco. I think there's some obvious ones from the V list that we think need to stay and have to stay and others we can certainly talk about. I think our meeting is in June 9th. Does that sound right? Something like that. It's the beginning, June 11th, June, maybe June 11th. So that's just a few weeks. That'll be our next meeting. If you need us to try to find a room to have a meeting before that, we will gladly do it or even a, we can even go via Zoom if you feel like you need more information. People have been really great about getting together. So if that's what you feel like you're good enough for what we can give you, then we're good with that.
Yeah, I just need to dig my heels into this for a few days and then maybe we can have a remote meeting or something like that. Just an update. This is where we are. This is what we've done, that kind of thing.
That'd be great. That'd be great. Yeah. Instead of everybody traveling out because we've kind of talked through these options now twice in a week and I think we're pretty, an idea of what which ways we want to go. So that would be wonderful. And then obviously, if anything comes up that has to be asked of the town, the town council or this committee, just get in touch with me.
I I don't need a committee formal vote, but I'm presuming I I don't need a committee formal vote, but I'm presuming with a nod of heads, one, six and seven are generally the concept that everybody liked at the last meeting.
Like-ish, yeah. Wit wit like-ish, yeah, I mean, I think, I I um we did ask, I literally looked by the numbers, I heard from ten committee members and on one and seven, nine people were in agreement, I think we had six or seven people. And number six, the other ones, you know, had a vote here and there, but they were definitely the ones where we felt with some of these adjustments that Michelle, Ronnie, and you know, Vicki have talked about and we have talked about, that we feel that those had the most potential to to be worked in.
Yeah, I I really, before I pull the trigger and spend money, spend your money on um the cost estimates. Yeah, I kind of wanna know for sure, right, these are the three we're estimating, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think everybody, we're kind of, that's, that's what our options are, right? I mean, if anybody feels differently, it's a good time to say it now. But yeah, I think and and you know, those tweaks I think are important, I think we've talked a lot about trying to, if there's any way to narrow that space. And it seems like there might be some manipulation of that. And then we'll just reflect and, like I said, if anybody has any other thoughts, you know, I email you like every other day anyhow, so might as well keep it going.
Sounds good.
All right, well, thank you so much for, both you, Rocco, the whole team up there has been incredibly responsive for our timeframe and um what you guys have delivered, and I think there's some hope for this that we'll keep things in order. And again, um Michelle and Ronnie too, if you guys have questions, I know, you know, they can re, you can reach out directly to them. I know room size has been a question for them particularly, making sure that that that's fitting their their program spaces. I know that, we'll refine that as that goes on. Um but um Michelle and Ronnie, just feel free to reach out, just CC me so we're not doubling up on them.
Yeah, I don't mind talking directly with Michelle and Ronnie, so. What I'll do is if I modify the plan versions, I'll get them to the committee, I'll get them to Michelle and then we can have, Michelle and our team can have a dialogue.
Right. Right, anybody have anything else? We had no minutes to um pass this time because it's too quick for the minutes to turn around. So I thank everybody for um making this time too, I know it's a busy time of year, everything is a busy time of year, but a lot going on. So I appreciate everybody coming out and uh trying to make this work and um keep, keep hope alive, right, so.
This uh this presentation was the same one.
Yeah, I'll just pull up one, six and seven to get to Joanne and then I'll have the the geotech report I'll add in as well.
Oh yeah, I do have that.
Yeah, I think you sent me an electronic, so I can just send that to them, that'll be fine, and I'll send it to all of you guys. I don't understand it, but, all right, I think we're good, right? And anybody, motion to adjourn.
There we go.
Christine, in a second? It is eight fifty-six, all right.